David with his full capacity with the committee from the next meeting onwards. So we look forward to having his insights throughout our conversations. Moving back to the agenda, item one is appointment of vice chair. Do we have nominations from members for the position of vice chair?
I would like to nominate Keith Driver. Do I need to do this?
Yes, it's recorded councillor.
I would like to nominate Keith Driver, please.
Thank you. Do I have a second up?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor. And so are there any other nominations for vice chair? I see no indications, so I'll put that to the vote. All in favour of councillor Driver continuing as vice chair of the committee, please indicate. That's great. That's unanimously passed. So thank you for that. And item two, apologies. Jackie, do we have any apologies today?
Yes Chair, we've had apologies from councillor Haynes and councillor Champion is substituting on her behalf. And we've also had apologies from councillor Mike Sands. And I understand that councillor Ian Stuteley is running late, so we expect him any time. Thank you.
Thank you Jackie and thank you for those members attending instead of the other councillors. So moving on to item three, public questions and petitions. Have we received any Jackie?
No Chair.
Thank you. And so we'll move on to item four declarations of interest. Do any members have any declarations of interest? No, that's great. And so we'll move on to the next item, which is item five, which is minutes. Now circulated through your agenda, there's been two sets of minutes, including the extraordinary meeting we held just a little while back. Are there any queries about the validity of those minutes? I see none of those. And so that's, we take that as agreed, both sets of minutes. Thank you committee. And so we will move on to item six, which is the progress report on internal audit activities 2122. So I'll hand over to Fay. Thank you Fay.
Thank you very much Chair. Okay, so you've had this report, I think, a couple of times, with the standard layout and template. So I think I'll head straight to the key points for you. And if you go to page 22, you'll see the number of days that have been delivered. And on page 23, you'll see those reports that would be made to finalise in the period. So we have six reports and one is kind of being drafted. You can see that positive assurances have been given in each of those areas, with the exception of health and safety. Which is at the bottom, which has been given a limited assurance, very big. Thirty-seven recommendations have been raised, 2122 within this period. And then what I've done within this package to provide you with a high level summary of the plan and what was achieved and when the reports were sent to you. And then you've got the executive summaries for each of the reports that we finalised. So you can run through what the findings are, what the recommendations are, and as is the process now. If any of those go over their timeframe, if we've agreed with management, we'll then bring them back to you for screening at a future meeting. But if you'd like to ask any questions on any of the findings, if you'd rather have to take those. I imagine the committee would love to focus on the seven important findings from the health and safety draft. So I'll hand over to you, thank you.
Thank you for the introduction Fay. And just councillor Stuteley has joined us. Just to say councillor, we've just moved on to the first main item of the agenda, which is the quarterly update, final quarter for internal audit. The report's been introduced and now we're just looking for questions and observations from the committee. So I throw over to the committee, do we have any points that members wish to raise? Councillor Champion?
Thank you. I was just, I was just looking at the limited assurance of health and safety, which I was just wondering, what is the time frame for that? Is that obviously reasonable? What, sorry, I have to excuse my English, I'm getting on a bit before, but so it's obviously a very direct plan. I was just wondering if it's really something.
Yes, definitely. I can make a better slide there. We're limited to the trade-in that we're making for the year. The way the process works is that we believe the management has finally directed the actions, which is why we're still commenting in the draft, we're working through that commonly. We need to make sure that everybody's happy to take those recommendations, all the work, all the timeframe that's achieved. You can see from the example, we've tried to put the context in a clear way, it is part of the development. So you have to make this last, that we're going to be moving towards this. And we probably have to remain in that. So at this point, we'll agree a timeframe that suits and then imagine we've worked towards achieving those. As I said at the start of the presentation, we will do those, they'll come over the due date. Come back to you, we'll leave a new chat light, but by the sounds of it, we're moving forward pretty quickly.
Councillor Wright?
Thank you. This continues on the health and safety thing. It sort of occurs to me that with the changing workforce footprint of the councillors, we've moved from there to the white collar and then green collar, with some in-sourcing. Does that change some of the priorities around health and safety? And does the work that's been done for this particular issue, does that reflect the changing nature, the sort of types of health and safety incidents, issues that might occur within the council?
Yeah, the control and work that these days fluctuates and changes. I think the controls that we need to have in place to demonstrate the type of legislation is very clear without what the council needs to do. Is that the test again? So in some areas, it's acknowledged that there's a few needs to be made to provide success and improvement at the start. But regardless of who's got, I need to be aware of what to do and how to do that. So it wouldn't pass that quickly.
Thank you councillor. Any other points about the quarterly report from members? And I'm aware that we're in the, you know, the start of a new cycle. So we've got some new councillors on the committee that would be new to the process. So I think it's for our senior ones to offer that continuity. Noting that I'm not seeing any hands raised, I would just turn attention to page 40, the third paragraph. It says, "The last fire risk assessment at City Hall was undertaken in 2015-2016 by the MPS Group." That's rather a long time. And I think it ties back into contract management and checking that the work is actually being actioned. So I welcome the fact that we're doing other work to address that. But clearly we've had other issues around fire safety risks that have come forward in the last year. I'm just wondering if there's an explanation as to why there's such a gap between the last assessment of this building? Considering all of the artwork and the beauty and magnitude of the irreplaceableness of this building. Is that a deliberate thing or is that an oversight?
I'll just take that to highlight that what we're trying to do, the executive summary, very much focused on what needs to be done to tackle that. I haven't gone into the reports, so I can't offer an explanation for that. But you can see from the response within the other points to note that that has been highlighted. It's a significant risk, as you say, and that will be rectified as a priority.
Yes Luke, thank you. Yeah, please.
And I think the chair of that FRA has now been completed and some actions have been produced for that, so that's been done.
Okay, sorry, I, the question was, I should have really just put it to yourself Luke, as it's under your directorship. So is it an oversight? I know that you are not at the council in 2015-16 and are fairly newer to the council and are addressing areas in your portfolio accordingly. But is that an oversight issue? You know, the gap of time, is that the right amount of time? You know, or is it a, you know, a contract management issue there? I'm just wanting clarity on that.
I think to keep our face, I can't really give you kind of an insight into why that fire risk assessment hasn't been done. It's part of the ongoing work that we're doing in that health and safety generally, has now been done. We've got a set of actions out that will be delivered.
Yes councillor.
Just follow on. When's the next one?
Sorry councillor, next?
Next time you look at the floor.
I'll have to come back to you. Tell me what it was, if it was domestic, but I'm not sure and I'll come back to the committee on that.
I just wonder if it comes eight years ago.
Yeah, let me, let me check that rather than give you the answer.
I think to pick up on your point councillor, is that as we've been identifying that key policies and procedures have no controlled time to be looked at. It's something that the council, this committee has recommended the council do. We can see later in our reports that that is actually being actioned. So I'm sure that that kind of question could be posed once all that data sets have been put in place. And that would be a part of the way, the new operation of the council moving forward. But I agree, that should be something that we should be able to find out fairly easily. Thank you for that councillor. Any other points from members at this point? No, okay. So I just, just want to pick up in the same paragraph, just there, just below that. It says, the end of that sentence, third sentence starting, "We understand that the council has identified that a number of the documents related to health and safety in operational assets are in need of updating, and that there is no documentary evidence trail to give assurance that the priority actions identified in previous assessments were indeed carried out." So that's quite alarming to read. So again, as a part of that contract management issue the committee has highlighted, that there is, you know, has been historically a failure in monitoring those contracts to make sure that though, you know, not in all cases, but there is a systemic issue here, that the contracts are not being monitored to check that there has been compliance. And so this is another example of that situation. And the quicker that we have contract management tied off, and we've got a report on that later, the much better this council will be functioning and the reduction in risk to the council and taxpayer. So I just wanted to highlight those two points from that. That's all I would like to raise from the quarterly myself. And so if there are no other points from members, I'll thank Fay for the report. The report is duly noted and we can move on to the next item, which is item seven. So item seven is the actual internal audit annual report. So this takes into account all the previous reports Fay has done. And then she provides her opinion for the year. So I'll hand over to Fay to introduce the report.
Thank you very much Chair. And in fact, right, as you say, this report, the next step to the one before it, and that it summarises all of the work that we've undertaken for 2122. Talks about the advisory work, it talks about the results of each of the insurance reviews that we've undertaken. I think the report itself has been said fairly explanatory at 2.2. On page 47, you've got the opinion itself. So that gives you a summary of what we're saying from the internal audit perspective. And it refers to section 3.5.3 of the report where we talk about anything that we feel the council should include with the annual governance statement, when it talks about governance, risk management and control for 2122. So you can see there, we have suggested that anything that has been raised as a limited should be left in the ADS until it's completed. And that has been factored in and included. So I think it's the council for that. And then at section 3.5.3, we have some scope limitations. And I think throughout the year, we have discussed the resources and difficulties that we've had due to Covid and due to resources in general, and that it will identify that there's a gap there and that the risk needs to be mitigated. Hence, we stick to KIP for you today. And the council is now part of the consulting arrangement and has been able to draw on more resources to complete the plan of work. And so we should see a much better position for the next year and more work delivered as a result. So you've got a few appendices just to have a look at. And then appendix two, we've provided you with a summary that gives you an indication for any audit recommendations that remain outstanding at year end. So you can see that there on the table. And there's explanations for any that are overdue, that are of a high or medium priority. So you've got a new due date there and the latest response from the responsible officer, because of why it's overdue. So that gives you a full picture of what you still have to do by the internal audit perspective. Normally there's some questions around that. So at this point, I'll hand over to you and I'm happy to try and answer as best I can.
Thank you for introducing the report Fay. I'll throw it open to members for comment. Okay, so a wall of silence. Yeah, yeah. I mean, the agendas have been circulated in good time, offices are available for questions. So I'm sure the councillors are up to date.
Obviously, as Fay made clear in the introduction, this is a, almost a synopsis of stuff we've talked about at other meetings. So I mean, I'm quite happy to rehash some of the points I've made in the past.
Yep, no, if there's nothing further to add, we don't need to waste time going over old ground. And if everyone else on the committee feels like that, then that's absolutely fine. So we will note the fact that the reasonable grading has been provided. And that has been impacted by the limited assurance given by the corporate health and safety investigation. I note further along that the annual governance statement, that you've requested that those particular outstanding items are included. I look around the room to see if there's any further points on that. David, would you like to come in? Could you press your red button on the mic please?
Something, is that better?
Yeah, it's, the only can pick it up.
Is that better? Okay, I'm only after, but if I could ask a question, if that's okay, just about the reasonable grading in 2.2.
Yes.
And because that graded, the reasonable grading has been given as I read through the report, without any caveats at all. So that's real surprising then, when you go down to, you're given a reasonable assurance, which is expected as limitation of scope around care roll housing benefits. And the two to me, you know, match, you either have taken a reasonable opinion, which you have done, without any caveats. Or you've got to give caveats within the reasonable opinion, if that makes sense. And that's how things go.
Thank you for your comment there. And 3.5.3 is where we covered the caveats to the opinion and asked that the annual governance statement, that those areas are reflected. That's kind of how we've laid it out. I'll take your voice up, have Fay make clear your opinion about that.
If I could let David come back on that explanation as a follow-up on an original question?
I can come back on that, because obviously you made reference to the CIPR document. And I'm presuming that's a CIPR guidance that came out in the year 2020.
Yes.
Okay, well in that case, that CIPR guidance was issued specifically to deal with the fact that both authorities and authorities in all the sections were unable to, because of Covid, undertake sufficient work within the year, I'm beginning to realise, 2021. Because both authorities in all the sections were doing lots of crap. So that guidance was specifically to deal with that. And so I'll show you what it is. It says, the, it's come about because of lack of resources. Through with the way that internal audit services have been doing previously, there's no mention of, sorry, there's no mention of Covid. And I, again, the two to me just don't match up, they just don't seem appropriate. Going back to the reasonable assurance of being, giving reasonable assurance because the authorities' arrangements, even though you're not familiar with specific areas. But then you said that's because of the limitation that CIPR issued because of Covid, which may even seem applied. Then just matching up some actually.
So just to come in before we respond, I think that those are valid points that is raising. And I think, you know, if you can expand an explanation for the justification of using that, that would be great.
So well, thank you Chair. Yes, so within 2.2, you can see that a limitation of scope applies to those areas that we have not been able to provide assurance over. So it's clear that there's a limitation there. And we have enough work there for me to be able to give a reasonable on the stuff that we have reviewed. And section 3.5.3 could, as you pointed out, make a little bit more reference to the fact that it is Covid related. Some of the reasoning behind not being able to carry out as much work as we had hoped to. And Covid was still an issue in 2122. And I appreciate the guidance came out for the 2021 year. But it was still very much around and was still having an impact on our day-to-day ability to deliver the work. And so, yes, thank you for your observation and your comment there.
Yeah, I just add at that point, I thank David for raising that point. And then when he's with us in an official capacity from the next meeting onwards, obviously we can delve deeper into observations and points that he is raising. But I appreciate what David's raised there. Obviously, Covid was a significant factor still. You know, and I'm not sure how much of our actual direct resources were directly affected by Covid, which actually impeded that. But you're saying that that's the case. So I'll take that on face value. But we all know that the real reason that we haven't delivered as much as we wanted is, has been in the delay in changeover. And that's a knock-on effect from when we had an interim the year before. And we had the delay in initially instigating the work with yourselves. So, you know, I think it's worth having on record that I'm disappointed that we've got a lot less coverage than we have had in previous years. I accept the point that Fay's saying is that she's given an assurance on what she's covered. I suppose the question is, have you covered enough to give an overall assurance? Which I assume you would have done, because you couldn't have done without so. But we would like to see more audit, more robust audit done, proactive audit work done, that's absolutely fine. But we should be aiming to fulfil what we set on an audit plan each year. And it's disappointing if we don't. And if we need to put mitigation into that audit plan at the start, in terms of if we think Covid's going to be a continued issue, rather than seeing things dropped, I think the plan that's brought to committee should be delivered. Thank you. Let Fay in and then any other points from committee members.
Chair, yeah, I think it's, you know, it needs to be clear that it's a combination of things. And they have been highlighted within 3.5.3. And I do take independent members' point that Covid should have been mentioned there too, because it has had an impact. You know, it's a lot of things that's culminated in that. And that's why we've provided the action points to address that, to make sure that we don't have an issue going forward and to make sure that we can deliver enough. It's my view that we have enough here to give a reasonable assurance on what I have been able to look at. But certainly this isn't ideal. I want to be able to deliver more work going forward as well. And that's why we've put a much larger assurance plan together for 2023, oh sorry, 2023, to give greater coverage over operational areas and finance as well. So we are trying to tackle it to make sure that we don't have these limitations going forward.
Thank you for that assurance Fay. And I know we as a committee appreciate that level of work that's going to go in next year. The teething troubles of the changeovers have dissipated now, that I assume. But, you know, we are now into contracts and staff at TUPID, so that is not a reason to be applied. Covid can be applied in the future. But we're ambitious. To have two years where we've not had as fuller audit plan delivery as possible is pushing our luck to continue. So we do need a good and robust audit plan next year. And I would add to that, although we've discussed audit plan for this coming cycle etcetera previously, we've seen a dynamic shift in world finances and energy markets. We're seeing inflation running at extremely high levels, more so than anyone would have predicted. And we don't see any slowdown to some of those external influences. So I'm sure that that will be a focus for yourselves and CLT with the audit plan next year in terms of the robustness of, you know, the council's finances. Fay?
Thank you, yes. And I agree with exactly those points you raised. And I think we need to be mindful of the fact that we've agreed a plan for the year ahead, that this is absolutely going to be subject to change. We need to make sure that we're providing an assurance for the key risks. And that will be given through the strategic risk management process as well. So if there is anything that we need to shuffle around, which we did last year to some extent. We tried to pull in additional resources, we tried to cut things out and add more important things in. But it needs to be a fluid document that reflects the control framework. So it's, yeah, weapon progress, but the team has settled in. So we should be in a much better position.
No, and I think at that point, we're pleased to see the team settled in. I think thanks from the committee on record to yourselves and the team in delivering this report. We appreciate that work. And I suppose with the fact, I think in September, we will have one of our two visits of the Corporate Risk Register. I'm sure that on that report that we receive, we will see additional mitigations or alterations in risk scores around the council's financial situation reflected in that document and not waiting to be updated when it hits our desks. So thank you. Okay, so I'll just, you know, just turn back to the committee. Any other final points? All I would say is I thank Fay for the approach that she's done in terms of keeping all medium and high level outstanding recommendations for the attention of the committee. It helps to keep us focused on it. We can see in the latest response that there's lots of actioning points that have been happening. That will provide us some assurance that these are not being forgotten about, that there is work going on between our meetings to get the recommendations over the line. Yeah, and just referring back to, it's pleasing to see that the contract management waste services one is now for independent verification. So that should be closing off from ourselves shortly. Key policies and procedures, the first, the first two points on how often policy should be reviewed. And once a decision on a review frequency has been made, develop a review schedule of all key documents. I'm very minded to see that, you know, delivered as soon as possible. It's something that the committee has made quite clear that needs to happen. And we look forward to welcoming those medium recommendations off of our work programme. I'll take the point from councillor Champion.
Thank you. Just in relation to appendix one, audit work that I've taken. I was just curious why environmental services is not included there? Because I couldn't find anything in the paper, so I'll clarify that.
Thank you, yes. And that must needs to be finalised and completed. But as mentioned previously, we've drafted a little bit further along. But we're really at the stage where we're going through findings with management to verify them. So it's a delay. But those reports in the executive summary will be brought back to you in September with the previous agenda item within progress reports, so you'll see the full results of them.
Thank you for that assurance there on those outstanding reports Fay. So if there are no other comments from members, we will note the report, I believe that's what we're doing, noting it. We've commented on it. And so we'll bring that particular item to a close. That's right, isn't it? Yep. Sorry. Have we got to approve it?
Yeah, it's just, it's really prior to your overview and to confirm that the key information prior to carry forward to the annual governance statements, which you'll consider at the next meeting.
Such big agendas. I'll just confirm to the committee.
There's an incorrect thing in that recommendation. It's not on the agenda because we're taking it to the next meeting. So just, yeah.
Okay, brilliant. So we are, the Audit Committee in maintaining an overview as to the quality of the systems of internal control in operation at the council, is being requested to note of internal control in operation at the council is being requested to note and approve the assurance opinion awarded and confirm that key information provided is carried across to the council's AGS. So I think we have noted that. Are we happy to approve? Yes, nods around the room and the AGS element's been picked up.
Which will come to the next meeting.
And it comes to the next meeting.
So it's not on this agenda.
Wonderful. Thank you. And so, so we'll move on to item eight, that's fifty seven in your overall agenda packs, and that's the code of corporate governance, and I'll hand over to Leah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And we please pay a recommendation for the legislative side and just ask that you're committed to approve the code of corporate governance. As we all accept that, which sometimes in the council lots of units, code of corporate governance, it's not a statute of documents, it is a really good practice of documents having place. And what's also quite helpful, that SIFRA, SIFRA provides a very good framework for most documents, which we call CEN, there's a lot of variance in not of governance early, so when we look at it, what we try to is essentially keep a lot of the, um, current data secondary animal, we've got some standard straightforward and then quote these down English plans as we can keep it, or kind of fight technical documents. And the main body is how it looks at what SIFRA, SIFRA guidance, SIFRA framework says authority should have in place, says where we are against it and then what we need to develop. I think it's a shame how much of it's applied sometimes, because actually, if you need a new document, it's a musical development involved, possibly, so just talking about the self audit, that means that, and I do, as we adopt some of the others, we expect to have control of it, and that's.
Don't worry, there'll be electric motorbikes soon silently wafting past the city hall.
So as we develop our control of it, I think that the documents are, they're straight from things, I mean, can we get that back into this document? Or just sitting on the front page, which is about practices you have in place to look at anti-bond corruption, we've got a review going on right now of anti-bond corruption, and then we'll be looking at, okay, what do we need to develop, that can feature and allow that's implemented, that can be featured in the things in the council. So I'm very much welcome thoughts from the Audit Committee and documentation for you, and what we stick these things then have it feed into the annual government statement. If you look at it now, in September, you'll see the annual government statement, you'll see some things recognized development here, we'll get it back into the annual government statement. Again, I can then incorporate feedback from today into that document, you'll see, and actually it has to be published in the draft for the end of July as well.
Thank you for introducing the report, Leah. Councillor Wright?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Leah. I thought this was a really interesting document, actually. My, my first comment at the moment is, it's quite a high level one, which is, I suppose a recommendation for the next version that I think would certainly help many, hopefully other members as well. But under the areas for development, there are lots of things in there throughout the document about things the council seeking to do, is looking to do. Some of them don't have dates against them, and where there are timescales, they're not. So they're sort of, so I wonder if it'd be possible to have another column with projected timelines on for each of the areas for development? I think that would make the document more readable.
Actually, what you probably see is some of that will come in the annual government statement, because the annual government statement has an action plan. At the last meeting, the Audit Committee, you've seen the action plan for last year's AGS, because we couldn't sign it up until then, and I think our date finished it, so we've taken the things and put it there. But actually, it probably is quite useful to have it reflected in this document too, so it's definitely something to think about.
Thank you for raising that point. Councillor Kidman indicating?
Yes, yeah. And for myself and any other particularly fresh members of the Audit Committee, I'd be grateful if you confirmed what CIPFA stands for, please, thank you.
It's the Chastity and Chaste Public Relations and Campaigns, so it's one of the main bodies that if you're in Canton in the public sector, you've got to follow it. But it really adds the authority and providing advice and guidance around, uh, the campaign and audits and some public sector, just a little bit cappuccino, but we also have various other bodies, you've got Paul Seaman, that's someone who then gives to the Chastity Campaigns to provide some more limits, guidance, something C I A, everything, yeah, all the ones that last days, it's quite important, SIFRA, SIFRA seems to be the authority, they've provided a lot of frameworks and things which are very useful.
And I think that's a really good point that you raise, councillor. I mean, there are a lot of abbreviations throughout the document. Officers are on hand as you're kind of getting used to the, the new terminology, don't hesitate to pop in emails that they, they will fill them in. SIFRA also offer training and support, and one of the focuses of this committee has been in developing trading programmes for members and, and regular ward members as well, so they can interact with the committee. And that kind of leads me on to the point that we did have sort of training scheduled for earlier in the week, would have helped us in terms of governance and discussing that, and would have actually really helped to inform the work that we could be doing right now on this piece. So it was disappointing that we, we couldn't have members attend, but we will pick that back up in September, and I strongly recommend that any training we put on is for, for your benefit in terms of being, being able to function adequately on the, on the committee. So let's get those dates in the diary. Councillor Champion?
After each, this was fascinating. And going through it, one of the things which jumped out at me was principle B, ensuring openness. It's been highlighted to me by members of the public that when they've watched council meetings online, that we are often unable to be heard and that they, they don't feel that that process is very open. And it's also been highlighted to me that they would quite like to have a record of how they vote, that when they look up their MP, there's a record of how their MPs vote, but when it comes to the council, there's no, there's no, or maybe there is, and it's something I'm not aware of, I was unable to direct. And so when we're talking about things like openness, I think we possibly could take some concrete. What worries me about documents like this is that when we get the ethical realm, it becomes a bit abstract, and I feel like it would be beneficial to the council to make sure that we are fully accountable by making sure that any discussions we have are accessible to the public and our decision making is reported in a way that is accessible as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pick that up first and then I'll let Leah add if she wishes to. What, what I would say is that I've raised before, I have raised with CLT, that I don't think the IT equipment, although being operated excellently, is, is not up to standard. I agree. I know we've got financial challenges, but in part of being open democracy, we need to speak to colleagues at county and we need to get the equivalent amount of equipment in place. We don't have a problem at the other council I work at, so don't see a reason why we can't adequately record sound and vision here. Moving on to your point about recording a vote, if, if it's a unanimous vote, it will be recorded as unanimous, it will say numbers. You can, any council can request a recorded vote, as I did so at Corporate Committee yesterday, where names and that is recorded. So, you know, so there are, there are a few options, but, but I would agree with the point that I, I don't see what, any reason why we don't see the, the vote, the voting habits recorded of, of councillors and have that in an accessible place, so residents can quickly see how their councillor voted on issues. But Leah, would you like to add any direct points to, to what's been, what's been raised, particularly in conjunction with the document that you're doing? I think those are very valid points.
I mean, in terms of the recording committee meetings, I think our setup is not ideal in terms of the equipment that we can use, albeit it does have advantages in being quite portable. And when I've, I've watched and listened back to various meetings, and I've not necessarily had a problem with sound, but I do appreciate the visuals can be improved, and we do have the odd issue like some of the microphones and things. We do have some money, some capital funding available this year to make some upgrades that we are looking to take forward. But as I say, we do have a challenging financial position in the cost that some authorities can invest, we can't create the same business case to do, which I can go into with you and, and I'm a patient, I'm sure. In terms of records of votes, I mean, it's not standard, standard practice necessarily to do this, and it is really a matter for members in the constitution. As you say, a member can ask them, the visual base is recorded, and there are occasions when either we have to have a whole recorded vote, or members can call for a recorded vote on items if they feel it's particularly important or sensitive to do so. So the budget, for example, there's always a record taken of the way the councillors wrote on the budget, but, you know, it's within the gift of members to ask for that if they wish.
Thank you for that explanation, Leah, and I hope that we find a, a technological solution in budget and soon. And I think councillor Champion, I think the feedback you've received there could be well worth speaking to any members of, in your group on the constitution working group, and they could potentially take forward a, a change in the constitution, but as has been said, you can ask for a recorded vote as well. So thank you for those points. Any other points from members on the overall item? So let's.
I'll take one, please.
Go on, David, give us a very quick one.
Well, who's my, I suppose councillor Champion there, that will be equally, because there were twenty seven boards there, and what I'd say, ultimately, annual governance during the next committee meeting, is it the intention that all of those twenty seven boards will be included within as areas for improvement? In effect, has committee decided what's going to be a significant issue for inclusion in the AGS?
Well, let Leah in first. Do you want to, do you want, my, my, my response would be we'll, we'll consider us in the AGS at the next meeting, and, and you will be privy to fully being involved in that and helping us decide that criteria, or whether or not it's appendices to the document, you know. At the moment, this is the first time in my time on audit that this has come back for review. So, you know, how we consider to do it at the AGS, I think we'll do at the next meeting. I'll see if Leah wants to add anything to that.
So in the AGS this year, just to follow the custom that the council's taken previously, that within the document, the main body of the document, you have your super major issues.
Yeah.
So they might be issues that are raised by the internal audit team, they might be other issues, they might be things have identified, so, you know, the impact of the COVID pandemic has been a significant issue of most authoritative AGS in the past couple of years. So if those types of things are serious, what the council's done historically is they have a separate action plan, which also picks up any other governance matters that it feels that need to develop as well. So I'm effectively replicating that document for this year, it might be something we look at and embrace for a few years.
And, and I guess that if you've got views on the annual governance statement, David, moving forward, I'd say that potentially over the next few weeks, it would be a good time to get that ball rolling, particularly if you think there are, you know, radically different ways that you think it should be done, so that we can apply the amount of resource in terms of discussing that and then decide, and then, and then, you know, deciding potential changes and implementing them. So let's be bright and early if we want to make changes. Councillor Champion?
Sorry, I'm coming to your ears and I'm making comments, but one of the things which also, sorry, I love this document, I've spent too long on the DVD document, but one of the things which also struck me was in principle C, and it talks about finding outcomes of sustainable economic social and environmental benefits, on page sixty nine. And at the bottom of page sixty nine, it talks about taking, taking longer term view with regards to decision making. I'm curious about what our definition of longer term view, and if I might be able to see this to elaborate on that point. One of the first functioning democracies on the planet would be the Inuit Confederacy in America, and they had a policy that would take seven generations as their long term view. I'm curious what our definition of the long term view is, because I hear people talking about five years down the road, it's long term, and when I think about geography and I think about our future and the future of my children and their children, I wonder if we're, you know, I wonder if we're on the same page on that thought process. I'm with the Inuit Confederacy, by the way.
Thank, thank, thank you for that enlightening information and sound, sound judgment. And what I would say is, before I hand over to officers, obviously Annabelle's not with us today, Neville can perhaps provide some answers. I know that with the HRA, with the, the housing, it's over a fifty year lifespan when we're borrowing money. Other points are perhaps over fifty years, but maybe Neville can give us a, a, and, you know, a little bit of an explanation of what's long term to this council.
It's, it's very contextual, isn't it? So when, when we talk about the medium term financial strategy, so the medium term strategy, we, we tend to talk about the, the sort of the five year view. There's, there's the chair, points out the HRA, business plan goes over a thirty year view. When we talk about capital expenditure, I tend to sort of think about this fifteen to twenty years. So it depends what you're talking about, it's very contextual. But I think, you know, because we're talking about sustainability and the sustainable economic situation, I think, you know, it, it really does depend what, what we're talking about there, you know, and it changes. So given the, the sort of the inflation pressures that we're seeing at the moment, and the long term inflation review is very different to the inflation impact that we're seeing now. So, you know, I think, I think that would be, that would be what I would say, it's very, very much contextual and in, in, in terms of this, you know, this particular, this particular part of, of the, of the statement, you know, it, it could, it, it really does apply differentially. So, you know, again, pensions, when we're talking about pension liabilities and that, that would be a very much longer timeframe as well, which, which would feature in the discussions around the statement of the council, some of those, some of those areas. So I think, I think the answer is it depends.
Well put, Neville, thank you, I appreciate that. Any other points from members on the governance document today? Okay, so, so, so to pick it up, I think we really could have done with doing workshop on this, discussing this i- in a more theoretical way as a group, and then we could have put, put some work into this. So I think what we, you know, it's, it's disappointing that I wasn't aware that this was, I wasn't aware that this was coming, and now, as we can see, is the final item, we've got a work plan, so we can clearly see where things are coming. But I think we could have done with support, so we could have engaged with this particular item in greater detail or provided a stronger assurance of the work that's taken place, but we do appreciate the work's taken place, Leah, and I'm sure that we can facilitate that next time. Not only would I have focused that kind of workshop in terms of governance, particularly with the refresh of this document, to the Audit Committee, but that needs, that should be around all ward councillors, which could feed to their audit members for comment in this meeting, because it's, it's something that governs the whole of the council and affects all councillors. So I have no objections to what's here. I assume that this will come back quicker than five years, and I'm sure that we will be able to refresh ourselves and give better contribution next time it is brought back through having some additional training. So I have nothing to add to it now. With us endorsing it, is that the final version of it endorsed and, and off? So there are no changes after this point possible? Okay, all right, well, in that way, then I can't object to it and I can't enhance it, so I will approve it. Any other views, are we happy to approve? Yep, so nods, and so thank you, Leah, for, for putting that together and doing that work for, for the council. Lovely, and I'll bring that item to a close, and so we'll move on to item nine, and that's the contract management arrange, arrangements review, starting on page seventy nine, and back to Leah.
Thank you, Chair. And I understand that our council and committee collectively, it's an apology and start from the start of the review report. I don't think it feeds specifically else for this report, it's going to be an event, but I understand the issues that under the law, it's reporting, you have been talking about for a much longer period. And so this report is potentially my welcome, because it does, it does support some of the points that you've been making further up. And yes, we have been doing work over the past year to have a look at what arrangements we have made to support contract management within the organisation. So this report sets out, just a look at what we're doing, very good strategy, and focusing on primarily making sure that we have people with right skills and knowledge to manage contracts, because what people say in us is they have all the relationships with their contractors. And we're talking to the regular lawyers and things like that, perhaps in all of that, all the right skills and knowledge they needed to effectively manage those contracts. And we're going to like to focus on training and upskilling in the organisation in the past few months. And then as well, making sure we can. And then as well, making sure we have the right guidance and support. And then similarly, your experience is, I make sure that like sure systems in place. So when the staff can see she's in a good contract, I don't issue that to them. And then she can not go out to begin, and she's trying to make sure that we know that everything is okay, often. Some of that will be driven by, for example, the internal audit programme, looking at major contracts exactly as they have been doing with cutting, which helps us know whether or not we can have sure that certain specific areas, but actually not other systems and checks that we've had in place, which is set out for us to follow. It is, if the reports are still an element of work in progress, we can't necessarily change the system though, like this, it's not the impact we have in the organisation. And we need to continue to support difficulty development. We want to carry on some of that work, some of the training coming forward and hopefully it really can start to see that when we're talking about audit reviews and talking about some of the work that is being done in the organisation, some of the risks to organisations in contract management, we're quite hopeful we start to see that generally progress through the council board of future.
No. But thank you very much for introducing the report. It is very welcomed by the committee and thank you for pointing out that we have been addressing contract management and wishing management to look at that for a number of years and that by hook or by crook has happened now. Comments from members on the item? Right, well, let's kick off with thank you for the report. Reading the report, the first thing, councillor champion? Sorry?
Yes, sorry, that's okay. So I noticed on point eleven, it says about the weakest scoring areas, that nearly seven per cent of respondents considered they didn't know and believe that the right skills and knowledge in relation to contract management skills. I appreciate that if you find out that you're now addressing that, which is fantastic. I presume that links in with future, picture, I mean, sorry. I've had some, I've had some people contacting me confused about how the council goes through the, through the process of future events. So I don't seem to say that well. So maybe I shouldn't say anything at all. But all it is, is I was just wondering if this training, you know, is that training ongoing, is it happening now, what's the, you know, the outcome of that training? And linking that in, so I guess it's two questions, was this driven process? Can I direct, I mean, if I've got residents who feel that they are unsure about how the council is choosing our service providers, they feel they're being, in this instance, they're being overlooked, how can we assure them that this is amazing and we've got the checks and balances?
The questions we've got are warranted specifically about commission services and whether about their management of contracts. So you have the commission to clear it and then monitoring the contract to start management. But just to assess and respond to those questions, I know everyone's, could have wanted to get that.
Thank you.
And as part of the training, what we're then looking for is talking to people and listening. So within the training, people started to say, actually, I struggled a little bit with the norms and specifications and how do I specifically go about, what's good practice in areas? So we're picking that up and then going, okay, our next phase of training is going to be around these areas. We're also looking at, for example, I think you mentioned the report, having like an internal contract management practice in the group, to share good practice and understanding. And I think people have really benefited. That's why we're learning, which does some technical things, actually we've done classroom break sessions, so I think we're sharing experiences and they found that really a valuable process of learning from each other. And some can't speak to each other, but certainly they then start to go, okay, where do we go next in terms of what guidance and training we need to deliver? Alongside some of the other, Kim developed a window in the, that was sent into Cabinet and March of past, and it's leveraged and supported. In terms of how much is certified, we've been talking about people that are, have been unsuccessful. And it's like, the routes we take depend on financial values and it goes to a certain threshold, we have to follow certain rules because of the public regulations. We know there is a forthcoming major change to those regulations, that's likely to be about this time next year, we'll start to see that come into form, we've got to look at how that emerges and develops, it's going to be the legislation for a second year. If it's about certain thresholds, there are certain formal notification requirements, so they will get something which says, you scored this in terms of quality and foundation of these suppliers scored this, your price was this, this is the one. So they get, do we get some of that sort of information? We have it up and put on what's actually sat through the time of that ago. At another level, we don't have to be as explicit, but I think if anyone comes by, I think it comes over the side, we definitely know, we've, we've happily had that conversation with them, so it's encouraging to hear very much of it to reflect, we can set a talk to them. And certainly working with local suppliers in particular, in areas that we are looking at, have we developed a way forward in that area?
Yeah, no, thank you for that extended explanation slightly out of that. And I would add to it, it was welcomed yesterday at Corporate Committee at County where we introduced carbon pricing in our procurement. So we've got a council run by the Conservatives that are not necessarily going for the cheapest price, but they're valuing the carbon offsetting costs of their materials and I hope that this council can catch up soon. But with that said, I would say that what you've demonstrated here is that you've identified where the weaknesses are, you've offered training, you've offered, offering further training and you're also offering scrutiny of that kind of decision making and that monitoring. These are all things that when I joined the council, I expected to be in place and I'm now pleased that we're finally where we need to be. You can't reduce all the risk in a contract, but this certainly takes away a large proportion of what was unnecessary risk that the council was exposed to. So this is a positive piece of work that the council have done, they've been proactive. This has been led from the work that we have done, emanating effectively from the beginning of the issues we found around NRL and we're seeing this fruit of fruition, which is going to benefit wider parts of the council. So it's good work on behalf of the committee and it's good work on behalf of the City Council. And so we, I assume we note the report and have thanks, yeah, recommend that the Audit Committee note the arrangements in place to support the council in managing its contracts. But, oh, but councillor Wright wanted to speak, sorry, councillor Wright, bad times. Okay, go for it.
You've forgotten me, Chair.
Sorry, how can I forget you?
So such a minor point, but no, the one makes a good reference is to the department's primary program, which the council's been involved with. Is that really valuable? I know sometimes it's sort of looked at in prison or stuff often through central governments, perhaps. Is it the point on, is this a big thing for the council as far as you're concerned?
Absolutely. We've got funding places, we've got some individuals who can, who can take training for the, that training costs seven thousand pounds for participants and we get to number three. I've got a mixed service and contract manager, so some of it is contract and some of the procurement team vote on that. So they're benefiting from that. There are, then meetings of all these sort of strategic ways of your authorities, the tech part and primary program, we help and develop some of the governance guidelines. I'm saying, I'm actually going to find this really useful, this is where we're struggling with it. And I'm leaving that on Friday or the next one, that we're actually going to be recovering council's workshop access and on seats and some of the challenges they face in managing contracts. We've got this sticky issue, how do you deal with it, have we responded? And even today, I've got, you know, the summer webinar program, where we've got central government, one of the contract leaders from the Ministry of Defence is talking about leadership and contract management. And we've got death, talking about how to manage some of their contracts. But all of our staff can go along to and listen to this, they've asked, they've just been shown pain, they have been shared with some contract managers as well, you can strike by, they're getting stuck in some of those. So we're getting access to a huge amount of information, so it's about the way that we want our most access, because it can really help and it is of the fruits of this. Really great.
Very beneficial, that's, thank you.
No, that's excellent. Thank you for drawing that point and it's great to see that collaborative approach so that's supporting other organisations and also working with central government, which we need to see more of in the world moving forward. Councillor Studley.
Thank you, Jay. I have a specific question. What checks and assurances are sought from applicants for positions in relation to their own experience in contract management? And are assurances sought that they're not being overlooked, that it's been controversial as well?
I think, I think that's part of the recruitment process when we take on staff. So obviously, there's a, there's a practice as well, depending on the level of the staff, but you ask applicants for CVs, you check their competencies, considering the concerns you might be then testing in Excel and, or it's that solution. So it's, I don't think, I don't know about our recruitment processes, but I've had my own experience, which is very robust. So it is part of that recruitment process, just check that you can analyze skills, experience and have you also had in your part performance. The knowledge from your systems are on which if people don't have rights of service, should be picked up as part of that, as part of the training system.
Thank you for that answer. Does that answer your point, Jane?
It does. I guess it is. It is.
I suppose also if you have any follow up questions, you can sort of email that across for a more in depth answer. I mean, I don't think we want to be in this situation, and correct me if I'm wrong, was it the NHS in this region, didn't they get a director who had a degree that he didn't actually have? So yeah, doing robust checks on people's CVs is a box one of that process. Thank you for that point. So we note the report and we close the item. So that's agreed. Thank you, committee. Sorry, bear with me, I'm not used to doing it on paper anymore, it's so, so much harder. Hold on, right, okay. So that was contracts, so we're now going over to page eighty seven on your agenda, consideration of treasury management. And who's leading for us on that? Leah? Thank you.
Despite your previous evaluation, your recent self evaluation, you've had suggested how we're looking at treasury management within the organisation. Is this something which does, or should be another body that puts that? As a result, and I would credit to our committee officers, Jacky, you did a lot of research and thinking about different practices that operate and suggestions in this area. And the report highlights a lot of the different ways of operating this. We are suggesting that potentially having a dedicated treasury management committee is a collaborative effort between some of our cabinet members who ultimately, you want to alter the council, so the potential chairs of the audience, through the committee, but by the way, in the room, say, you can then do some of that kind of little work and then work collaboratively around some of these issues. And the problem we don't get to committee collectively is quite a specialist niche type of area and that's probably, my experience of this as well, is that it can be something that is most effectively done by having a smaller group of members, have that new kind of planning, and then bring in a community to explore issues in detail later and then bring them back for the options.
Before I let members in, I'd like to say thank you for producing the report. I think we would like Jackie to note, thanks to Jackie for the work that she'd done on that.
And Leah, Leah put this report together.
No, absolutely, and of course Leah as well. It's something that I've mentioned historically at full council with councillor Kendrick, et cetera, and in different areas, that, you know, I've had concerns around treasury management. I'm very pleased that we now have our annual review of the skills in the committee and again, that came out of that process. I'm ecstatic to see that we've now discussed and delivered a solution to that and I fully endorse the solution that's been laid out today. We are in a difficult financial situation globally, locally and as a local authority. So it's never been as more important than ever to be looking at treasury management, offering that robust challenge and that scrutiny, which ultimately supports the administration in delivering a balanced budget and having a council that works for the people of Norwich. So I very, I very much welcome the report. Again, it's another good piece of work from this committee over time, see it come to fruition today, it's excellent and I commend the work of the committee members on that as well. And I fully endorse it, but I do throw it open to members if there are any comments or observations. Councillor Wright?
Just a practical one, Chair, which is obviously the report's asking us to recommend the Constitution Working Party, paragraph twelve and thirteen. I believe there is a Constitution Working Party pencil in for next week, so is it, is it the expectation that this will be considered that way?
Yes, excellent. And so any other comments or views about the way that we're going to handle treasury management moving forward as a council? Councillor Kendrick, thank you.
I just actually agree with you, Chair, that it's an F idea, and to play for one and get to form as a body with some specialist skills, we'll be able to concentrate getting really down to the integrity of this very important matter. Of course, it will become all the more, all given the different financial position of this authority, like all other parties, can find itself in relation to next year's budget.
And without, without belittling the important words of our cabinet member, I'm just going to have to pick myself up off the floor because I think I just fainted because I just, did I just hear, we're agreeing on something? That's, that's excellent. But no, in all sincerity, I fully.
Wrong, wrong. Right.
Thank you for that. Okay, I'm back in my box. But no, in all sincerity, you know, you can see it was cross party support for working like this and for the benefit of the council. So thank you, councillor Kendrick, for your considered words and I, we, and I put it to the vote that we recommend this to the Constitution Working Party. I have unanimous agreement for that item, so.
But then goes to council.
And then on to council thereafter. So that's excellent and we will obviously have a point to pick that up again and I'll get you back for that, Paul. And so we bring that item to a close and we move on to item eleven. Now, there are some time pressures on today, that's not to say that everything in the Audit Committee is not fair and important and we give everything due consideration. This is a report put together kindly in conjunction, this is the annual report of the Audit Committee. It's put together in conjunction with myself and councillor Driver and kindly Jackie as well. Both me and Keith have had an opportunity to look at, comment, amend, and we're fully happy with the document in front of us. I think it's a fair and true representation and so if there aren't any queries, I would like to move straight to the vote on this particular item, but very happy to hear any comments if wish. I see no indication, the committee is happy to go to the vote and the committee approves the content of the.
And it goes to next council.
And again, it will go to next council. And that is unanimously agreed, thank you for that. And so we'll move on to the final item of the day.
It's the new standing item.
And which is now our new standing item. Again, Jackie's been most supportive in getting this up and running and off the ground. It makes absolute sense that we have a work programme, so I'd like to thank Jackie and everyone.
And my colleagues.
Yeah, and all colleagues involved in instigating this in the committee. It helps us to focus our minds, look at what we've got coming up, be preemptive in questioning for particular items that we may expect. We can do a lot of work offline, we don't have to do it in committee. So if there's any issues with us having a work programme, please raise. And if there are any specific points about what's detailed on the programme that you would like to raise now is the time. Councillor Wright followed by councillor Studley.
Just a very, my Chair, as Chair of scrutiny, I find the fact that we have a standing work programme every meeting very valuable and so thank everyone who's put this off the ground, Jackie and that sort of work. And I think this will be really useful for this moving forward.
Thank you for those words. Councillor Studley.
Yes, thank you, I agree with you, it's going to be a good standard of activity. Looking at the answers that are coming up and noting that we have to remember this, it might be a good idea for members to seek at least some guidance about what's coming up ahead of time, so that we can, when it is a council and this committee that, so the council people, councillor, chair, they're leading the committee.
Councillor Champion. Councillor Champion is substituting today, but what I would say is, I think that's a very good and valid point. I'm quite happy for offline, if Jackie's happy to just get the ball rolling, is that we do a little round robin of emails, set up a Teams for fairly, you know, fairly soon. Might be difficult to get it in before September with holidays, but we can try. And so new members can address the work programme, if we can have an officer in attendance to kind of help explain the backgrounds of that and then, and then that will help give focus for areas of research and understanding ahead of the committee meeting where those items will be addressed. So I think that's absolutely good, positive suggestion councillor, so thank you for that.
We've also got training, we're going to reschedule the training from last night.
Yeah, we've got the, we've got the, the governance training and the cybersecurity training to reschedule for September. So it might, so it might be a case that if we actually do get the date sorted for that, perhaps we have 30 minutes before or after to talk about the work programme as well, or, or even incorporate that, that some of those elements into that discussion so that helps with the next meeting. Leah?
Chair, do you mind, I was just thinking, based on the discussion tonight, when you mentioned about your code of, the code of corporate governance and member input to that, and how can they do something as an informal session with the committee? Just looking at the timing and that, on 21st of March, we've presently got the AGS, 21, 22, of course it does depend on whether or not the external auditors have successfully concluded their work on that platform. It might be worth scheduling something as an informal session, say the week after that, because you, hopefully you'll have had the chance to see the output of last year, the previous year's AGS. And then you're thinking about, okay, where do things stand now, where are we in code of corporate governance? And also it's really helpful to do that as a committee once you've had a year before we get into the new election cycle and things. And then I'll bring the revised code of corporate governance back next July. So I'm just thinking that might be useful things to do. And also to mention, Chair, what you have suggested, I think it's just enough, I'm sure I mentioned councillor Wright about potentially doing sessions part of the autumn member development programme. The cabinet bits about where councillors raise issues and how they can successfully resolve them. And also bits about the work of the Audit and Scrutiny Committees to go outside the immediate membership of those committees. So members understand a bit more about the role of those committees, how their work, how your work programmes in two committees are developed and so on. So we're looking at potentially bringing something forward, it might, but it'll be yours sometime now.
Thank you for those comments, Leah. I totally agree with your timescale of addressing sort of governance understanding ahead of, full council later next year. I think that's great and I'm sure that's duly noted and that we can action that, I think that would be benefit of the committee. And again, yes, great to see in the autumn programme for members, again, another piece of training I've been suggesting for three or four years about audit and scrutiny, what's the difference, how do they work and the mechanisms of utilizing them as a member of committee or as a ward councillor, is timely and useful, so I welcome that training, can't wait to, to be a part of that. So that's excellent. So if we've got no more comments on what's scheduled on the work programme, let's let David in for a final word.
Please, if I can, before the final one, talk about the annual governance statement. I believe it's such an important document, you shouldn't wait 12 months to decide, because it talks about what's really significant in the council, one of the significant weaknesses in this space. I don't think it's appropriate for all the committees to wait 12 months to find out what's actions being taken. I think a lot of it should be, should be provided at 12 months.
Leah wants to go. I'll let Leah respond first and then I'll take that point, but thank you, David.
We're bringing the draft annual governance statement before the committee in September. So we'll see the draft document at that point. It will be published in July, as is your requirement. So any number 22, have a look at the end of July. In August, summer holiday, summer holiday ruling, yes, your governance statement, so bring it formally before you in September. At that point, we're also having an internal audit review of the way we prepare our AGS, that'll be ongoing at that time. You then have the external auditors look over the statements within it and the external auditors then are currently anticipating their audit will start in December, I believe, Neville, if you have it in your head. And we're hoping then their output will then be reported through 21st of March, so that'll be the point at which they'll be saying whether they've got any concerns with the annual governance statement or whether there's any qualifications they might have to their own opinion on the AGS and the state of the accounts. So, but unfortunately we are contingent on their timelines for doing that. And as we saw this year, there were significant delays that came before May. What I'm then suggesting is, once we've had that, then we have a session with the committee ahead of preparing next year's code of corporate governance, that workshop I think we suggested. But I'd hope, I'd want to do it the end of March, early eight, like I say, because I think it'd be really good to get it in before the election cycle and it's committed for a year. If the AGS, if the external auditors haven't concluded their work by then, I think we'll still do it anyway, and that would be done.
I think that makes logical sense and I think David's points were valid, we, we've not got that gap that you're kind of identifying. But at the same time, we've got some interesting reading for the summer, David, ahead of us, but where we can peruse the, the draft document. And again, I think the committee will be very interested and minded to see your professional and fresh eyes on our AGS for comments to help us incorporate, you know, how we address that moving forward. I will note that the committee did do quite a significant amount of work on that in the previous cycle, I think, so, and we did a bit of training around that and we engaged in a stronger and more positive way with, with that. So I think we're on a journey with that and I think that David can help us get that, get that even better and, and, and when we move forward. So we'll bring that item to a close. We are happy to agree the work programme and having the standing item. Any other comments?
Yeah, I was trying to-
Councillor Driver?
I was just going to mention what Leah was saying about internal audits, it didn't start in two weeks before Christmas, where Annabelle's already said that's a bit of a nightmare when to start, she's asked for an earlier start and she can't get an earlier start. No one will swap with her from another council their earlier starts. What contingency plans, so we got in our programme, because I can't see any at all, I can't see in March that report being ready. It wasn't ready this year. I mean, I, it looks like we're going to lose a whole year of order, should I say. Well, we won't lose a year, it would just be a year, right?
Obviously Annabelle's not here, but if, if ones who address that, I think Neville will come in on this, will he?
Let him come in.
Yep, please, Leah. Yes, 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 yes. But Neville, councillor Driver raises a valid point about these delays and the knock-on impacts and, and that there is no mitigation or assurance that it's going to arrive at that time. So what's your view on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of bound to agree. There is nothing we can do in mitigation, it's completely outside of our control. I think what I would say is the, particularly the AGS is a, very much a live document, so it continues to be updated as time goes past, which is why when you approved the accounts with the revised AGS at the last meeting, the extraordinary meeting, there was a, an update to the AGS that reflected events that had happened between the original draft AGS, which you'll see September in the final statement of that. It is a, very much a live document, but it formally sits alongside the statement of the account, so again, approved together and it's important to recognize that, that need as well. But I think, you know, and as to your substantive point, we are really at the, at the mercy of the external auditors on, on this one, so, you know, we, the committee contributed to the Redmond review that was looking at these sorts of issues. And I think when, when Mark from EY attended the meeting, I think he was quite clear that, you know, they're, they're sort of in a, in a catch 22 situation too, so it is a very difficult issue for everybody to grapple with. It's a real, you know, it's a real valid point that, that we can do in that.
I suppose probably Leah here, where there is a lot of work to do, we're hoping now, we know what's going to happen. When I turn up to our next meeting and I've got this one in this hand, and when I get next meeting in this hand, so much differences is going to be. And why, you know, if we're going to have differences every time, it's a really good idea, but what is time? If it's going to change all along.
I wanted to ask goodbye to you, it's your turn, but you, you literally, you can hold it in front of the external auditor and show them the impact that they are having with their activities. From my viewpoint, you've been very thorough at challenging around the timescales that it's never says. We ask ultimately their mercy and we do, I guess we can all help hope that in what the government intends to do for the Redmond review will have some impacts, but it's a challenging environment.
We challenged them last year, what did they do? They put their voices up.
Any other comments? No, well, anyone who had prices going up on their bingo card, they've got the house, so congratulations. But just to add to that, I mean, I think the point that Leah raised is that we are at the mercy of the private market. The private market is under a tremendous amount of strain. I don't believe that any government of any political description has a magic one to fix the problem. I do acknowledge that there are excessive amounts of profits made in these large organisations, but I don't think there's a lot of profit in the contracts that they have signed with local government. So if you're asking private businesses to subsidise local authorities for their audit, then, you know, maybe that, that could be a national policy, but, you know, it's not, it's not something that we can do here. But the reality, reality is we need to work, we need to work positively with EY. They're doing, they're performing an important function for this council to give us that assurance. I think, I think the work that Mark has done over the years for this council stands the test of time and I think he's an excellent external auditor and I appreciate it, I would like on record, I appreciate the work that he does on behalf of the council. But we do know the frustrations with the timeframe and the pressure it puts on our offices as well. But thank you for raising that. Are there any other points to councillor Driver's point or on the actual work programme? No? Okay, so thank you for developing the work programme, another great bit of work. We'll bring the item to a close. An excellent positive meeting, great work from the committee, thank you for all your help and I bring the-